Just a couple of things as we get started. We learned this morning that if you are not talking, if you could mute yourself, it will reduce the reverberations in the background and everybody will have a much better quality of sound. The meeting is being recorded. I want to start out first of all saying that we are having an emergency meeting based on New Hampshire RSA 91-A, call it two, Roman numeral three B. And this is a result of the COVID-19 crisis. And in accordance with Governor's Emergency Order Number 12, the Board has been authorized to meet electronically. To that end, I need to ask each Board member three questions. I'll state all three questions and then I'll go through individually and get your reply. But I'm just gonna, you have to state where you are, which for all of us pretty much is at home. Can you hear the proceedings, which is the big one? And then the third thing is alone. So I'm just gonna go across by how I see people. So Allison, I'll start with you.
Hello, I am at home alone in my house.
Thank you very much.
And I can.
Thank you. Becky?
I'm at home alone in my house and I can hear.
Excellent. Ken, I have you next.
Okay, I am home alone and I can hear you.
Excellent. Karen?
I am also home alone and I can hear.
And Erin?
I am at home, I am alone and I am able to hear.
Excellent. Well, officially call the meeting to order at 4:02. This is our traditional reorganization of the Board meeting. So we'll go through that part first. The way the process works momentarily, I will accept nominations for a Chair of the School Board. Once I have a nomination, I'll ask for a second. We will then have a discussion, if there are any discussion points, and then we will take a vote. Then at that point, I'll either ask the Chair if they want to take over the meeting or would like me to continue running the meeting as we move through the Vice Chair and the Secretary and a couple of agenda items. So at this point, I'll open it up to anybody who would like to make a nomination for Chair of the School Board.
I'd like to nominate Ken for Chair of the School Board.
Second.
So we have a nomination, a second for Ken Hague. Is there any discussion for Ken? All our votes, they obviously will have to be by roll call, so I'll just go across. Allison?
Allison, aye.
Karen?
Aye.
Erin?
Aye.
Becky?
Aye.
And Ken?
Aye, thank you.
You're welcome. Would you like to take over? Would you like me to continue?
Do you mind just rolling through this and I'll take over from there? Is that okay?
I don't mind at all. In Hollis this morning, I ran the whole meeting. Whatever gives you greater comfort. And it's a very informal meeting, so at any time, anybody can jump in.
Okay.
Okay?
I just need to go close the door.
No problem. Since we have a Chair, I will take a nomination for a Vice Chair.
Well, I know she just left, but I would nominate Erin.
I would second the nomination.
Okay, so I have a nomination of Erin Saris by Ken, a second of Erin by Allison. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll roll call vote. Allison?
Allison, aye.
Karen?
Aye.
Erin?
Aye.
Becky?
Aye.
And Ken?
Aye.
Thank you very much and congratulations, Erin.
Thank you.
Next, we would, I would welcome a nomination for the position of Secretary of the School Board. This person traditionally does the minutes in non-public. We will not ask them to do that today because everything is new for everybody. And the major requirement is the non-public minutes because our recorded secretary takes care of the minutes during the public portion of the minutes. So is there a nomination for a Secretary?
Nominate Karen.
Okay. You have a nomination for Karen Jew?
A second.
Okay. I have a nomination for Karen, a second nomination of Karen by Allison, a second by Erin. Is there any discussion on the nomination?
I just want Karen to know that if she doesn't, that it's traditionally the newbie who gets stuck with the job.
I'm aware. It's not stuck with the job, it's the honor of the job.
There we go.
Welcome aboard.
At this point, I'll do a roll call vote. Allison?
Very true. Allison?
Allison, could you repeat that? Okay. Karen?
Aye.
Erin?
Aye.
Becky?
Aye.
And Ken?
Aye.
Okay. So at this point, we have a full complement of Board personnel and I thank you for that. We are going to postpone. We traditionally get this meeting through two policies. One is the Code of Ethics and one is our Investments Policy. None of those are essential to our operating procedures right now. So Legal Counsel is just recommended delaying those until either next month, when we get more proficient at Zoom, or when we are actually through this virus. Hopefully it'll be when we're through the virus. One thing I would like to get the Chair's input on, I would ask that we just keep the same signers of the manifest for the upcoming months as we try to do this transition through this period. And traditionally, the Board Chair has nominated those people and we can do that at a future date. But with your permission, Ken, I'd just like to keep the continuity of the Business Office going for this period of time.
Yeah, I'm on board with that. Assuming everyone's good with that. And then, you know, with it, we can do it electronically too, so that makes it pretty non.
Right. And for the public at home, the signer of the manifest of the two Board members that are provided the Excel spreadsheet on a monthly basis and approve all the expenses that come out of the educational pieces of the Brookline School District. So I thank you for that. And I will let Kelly know that the manifest is will stay in place and we can revisit that issue again either next month or in the future. So at this point, we're kind of moving into our actual meeting. I just want to give the public at home or anybody who watches the livestream or the recording, just a couple of things of what we plan to do. We'll have a discussion around COVID-19. We'll have a discussion around remote learning. We'll look at the district calendar for Brookline. That's the school year 2021. We will approve hopefully a school calendar today. And then we will go into a non-public session, which is a separate Zoom meeting. At that session, just so the public is aware, we're just discussing one topic and one topic only, which is teacher nominations. And we would go through those discussions with the Board. And then as our traditional process, we would come out of non-public but not resume another Zoom meeting and just take a motion on that one specific article, which is supporting the Superintendent's recommendations. To start our discussion today, I just wanted to have a discussion regarding public input. Bob, Gina and I are getting much more proficient at Zoom and there are capabilities at future meetings to allow public for input. And we would always welcome that. But for today's meeting, I'm just wondering if we could weigh the public input piece. First of all, we haven't had any public join us. Am I correct on that, Bob?
Actually, we do. If you look, if you open up at the bottom, the participant window, you'll see that it does appear that we do have some public who are in attendance of the meeting. What I did based upon the conversation that you and I had earlier, Andy, is I did mute public so that they can listen and they can hear and see the meeting, but they can't speak at this time.
Okay. What is the Board's preference regarding public input since we do have people that are participating? Would the Board like to see if there are any questions or would the Board like to weigh public input for this meeting and start it again in May? It's totally up to the Board and I think we can do our best.
I personally would love to be able to take input if there's questions just because we are in such a hard time. I understand the difficulties with it. Even if it's through the chat function.
Okay.
Post a question and then for the public to post a question through the chat function and then have us answer it that way. And that we don't have to mute and unmute people constantly, but that's just my opinion.
Yeah. And what I can do too is if any of the participants wanted to ask a question or provide public input, all they have to do is raise their hand and then I can unmute them. So that's another way of going about it.
If you're able to do it on Zoom, this is my first Zoom meeting. I think I'd be open to it too, just to try to, I know this is an uncertain time and there may be some questions.
True. So Bob, why don't we give that authority to you to see, contact the participants and see if there are any questions or any public comment?
All right. What I will do is if I see a person from the public raise their hand, I will let you, Andy, know or the Board Chair, Ken, know. And then you can make the determination as to whether or not you want to allow them to speak. Once that determination is made, I can unmute them.
Okay, so. So we'll proceed forward then. I just wanted to give you kind of an update. First of all, on COVID-19. As we all know, we have been monitoring the situation very closely in New Hampshire. As an educational group, we have a minimum of three Zoom meetings a week. Some of those are directly related to what I'll call Superintendent-type discussions. Others are related around student services. And as we are all aware, the Governor has extended our remote learning to May 4th. I don't know if that will be the end of it or if we are more likely to be moving forward to a greater length of time for this. That will be kind of known to us in the next couple of weeks. We have no decisions regarding vacation at this time. We will be conferring with the Boards. We will be probably holding another meeting to talk about that specific topic. Regarding the April vacation, there are kind of two trains of thought right now. One is that we believe students and families may need a break, especially if we're going to go this way until the end of June. The other thought piece that enters into this is maybe we'd be better off to push through since we wouldn't necessarily be able to go anywhere if we're all still stuck at home during April vacation and get out earlier. From a Board point of view, there are a couple of pieces here that we're researching and getting more information on. Typically, when a school is closed over vacation, we're not able to serve meals. So we're getting some guidance from the State on that because we are serving approximately 50 families from the two communities. We have lunches and breakfast at R M M S and at Hollis Brookline Middle School. And those are served on Mondays and Wednesdays for any family that's interested. And if anybody's sitting at home, they can reach out to Amy Cassidy, who's our Food Service Director, and she would take care of that and get them signed up for the program. In terms of the other piece that enters into the picture, we got a vacation, is we are via the I E P contracted with families and providers for services. And if we enter, end the school year early, like we could do if we didn't have vacation, we would actually need to provide more services as we entered the extended school year. Now, the extended school year is probably going to require us to offer more services because there are certain I E Ps and very few, because of Bob and Amy's work, that are not being met, but there still would be some. So it's really a very complex discussion around vacation. We will not make the decision alone. We will come back to the community and to the Board and get their input as well. In terms of the, what goes right with COVID-19 is remote learning. Tomorrow, we will be providing a survey to all families across the S A U to get some feedback on the pluses and the minuses, what has been successful, what has not, what they are looking for for some relief. You know, from our internal discussions as administrators, we are looking to try to establish some more grade level consistency from classroom to classroom and from teacher to teacher. We are looking at the level of work and the pace of that work because obviously, just like all of us getting on this meeting today, we're competing with bandwidth in our own homes, a number of people trying to accomplish a number of tasks all at the same time. So we do want to, you know, review and get feedback on pacing. And then we're just looking to really narrow in on the content that we want to make essential to this remote learning component. From the feedback we have received from families, it is going well. I mean, it's amazing to me how much things have changed in basically 18 days. You know, March 13th was the last day we were in school. Today, we start the month of April. We've had a couple of weekends thrown in there, so it's really our 11th day on remote learning. And this is a learning curve for all of us. You know, as Ken said, he was doing his first Zoom meeting. I wasn't much aware of Zoom until about two weeks ago and now it's basically become a significant part of my life. In terms of the State, there will be no state testing. This to me also factors in the length of our school year because typically in an elementary level, we'd be looking at three or four days to do state testing. So we'll actually be gaining that instructional time back. So we will be looking at the end of the school year and determining a date to suggest to the Board at a future meeting for when we would be out officially for summer and what that looks like. With regard to transportation during this period, we are in negotiations with the bus company. We are reviewing contracts. We're also reviewing how that is affected by the federal stimulus package because there will be money that school districts will be eligible for. But to be eligible for those would have to meet certain guidelines. And as I talked about with regard to students with I E P, if we are unable to deliver services during the year, we would have to deliver those to what is called compensatory services. So all of a sudden, this summer, even into next fall, we could have a bill to pay with regard to delivering of those services. So we really have to balance what we're doing in terms of decision-making around staffing and transportation and that to potentially not losing that stimulus money because that stimulus money might be needed to offset some of the compensatory services. Again, I wish I had more details, but as you can imagine, everything is being rolled out quickly and Legal is doing outstanding job, but we just don't have all our information to us and that's why we'd have further Zoom meetings. At this point, I'd like to just take a second before I open it up to the Board and to people on to thank Bob Thompson, Amy Rowan, Special Ed. They have reorganized that department into a remote department very quickly and very efficiently, holding probably close to, we have got over 100 Zoom meetings with families to reconstruct I E Ps and make sure that we can provide the services that we needed. Gina has been spearheading everything and anything related to curriculum and remote learning. And I know it's not perfect, but I'm very happy where we are compared to a number of my colleagues who I'm talking to on a regular basis. Our staff is doing tremendous work. Her leadership has been outstanding and I can't commend her enough. And then Dan and Dennis, who are also on this call, have moved into virtual principles. They are attending P L C meetings, they are doing faculty meetings, they are visiting classrooms, they are monitoring sites, participation, working closely with our nurses and our guidance counselors. So if a family is not responding or participating for a couple of days, they're getting a phone call and we're reaching out to them to make sure, first of all, that they're all right. Second of all, you know, is the need for more technology, what may it be? You know? We have done a host of what I'll call noneducational functions, delivering water to families, assisting families that maybe have had emergencies occur because in a lot of cases where their point of contact and we have the ability to get hold of other folks that could help them. The community has been fantastic and overwhelmingly supportive. I want to commend them for their efforts at the food pantry. I talked to Ted Putney the other day. We are well stocked there and that is a direct result of our community's efforts. To go along with that, we have the volunteer organization N68, who's providing food and meals for people over the weekend. Took care of about 50 some odd families last weekend, which was tremendous and that's all done through the volunteer effort. We have worked closely with Ted to make sure that the school's information is going to him and the town information is coming to us so we can make this as seamless as possible. We also sit as members of the Emergency Management Team of the towns, so we're kept up to date on anything that goes out via code red or anything like that. So this is one of those times where you really go to appreciate small-town America and everything it brings with it and the support of neighbors. It's been tremendous. And I'll open it up to you, any Board member who has a question or comment, and we'll do our best to answer that.
And we actually have a member of the public who has raised their hand and would like to speak.
Looks like there's some noise in the background. This is Eric Power. And I had a question, a comment and a question. I saw in the minutes for the last Board meeting that there was a motion to support the Superintendent in paying the bus drivers for the time that they were out of work until May or April 3rd. And I was wondering why that was done versus the, just having them file for unemployment like everyone else. And also just wanted to get an idea of how gainfully employed the support staff who are being paid now are, what they're doing now during this time of the school and the remote learning session. Thank you.
Bob, you want to touch the support staff first and go through those procedures and then I'll touch the bus?
Yeah, absolutely. So, you know, the support staff is, you know, really doing the same work that they would do if we were in a physical environment. They're supporting the learning of students. You know, that means they're working with case managers, they're working with classroom teachers. You know, they're Zooming with students, they're calling students and their families, participating through email. The last couple of weeks while we were getting I E P meetings set up, and to Andy's point, we've had hundreds of I E P meetings in the last two weeks. The special education staff, they've just done amazing things. And so while these meetings were getting set up, we had our paraprofessionals doing a lot of training that we typically just can't get to because there's just not enough time in the day where they're supporting students. This includes safety training, our R B T training, you know, training to be able to work with students with challenging behaviors, C P I training as well. So now we've moved out of that phase of having them do professional development and now they're working with students. And they are gainfully employed and are getting, being very creative about how they're providing support to students. And in fact, they're actually providing support to students who are not necessarily on I E Ps, who are just struggling as we move into a remote environment. So I give them a lot of credit. They've been very flexible with us and they're doing some really good work.
And with regard to the transportation question, what the Board did last month is gave me the authority to negotiate with the bus company. Kelly Sealy, our Business Manager, and I have reached out to the bus company and we are still in negotiations. We have not come to a settlement, we have not made a payment for this coming month. We also want to see how that plays into the stimulus package because the bus company is a contractor of ours and there are certain stipulations that have to be met to qualify for the reimbursement for the expenses during this time of emergency. So I don't have a clear answer. As I told the Hollis Board this morning, I'm telling the Brookline Board now and the Co-op Board in a couple of hours. That is in process and once we have more information on the bus company, we'd be coming back to the bus company, to the Board with regarding the bus company.
And we have another member of the public that wishes to make public comment.
Hello, Mike, can you hear me? Yes, excellent. My name is Matthew Malo. Just wanted to briefly introduce myself. I'm the new Secretary on the Brookline Finance Committee and look forward to assisting the Board however I can in my advisory role. I'm just happy to participate. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Matt. Congratulations on your election.
Thank you.
Are there any questions from the Board regarding either COVID-19, remote learning, Special Ed, anything like that for Gina, Bob or I that we can, before we move on to turning it over for the Hollis, excuse me, the Brookline District Calendar?
So just to let you know, Mr. Power has his hand raised again.
Excellent. Allison has a question.
I have been, I think we, all the Board members received an email. Can you not hear me, Gina?
It's very, it's very slow.
It's very echoey and slow. It's just hard to make out what you're saying.
Let me disconnect from my other thing going on here. And see if that helps. We received an email from a community member, a staff member, the Board did. I don't know if everybody's had a chance to look at it yet. Regarding, I think it's regarding C D A and the custodians and what they're doing at the moment and their needs in the building. I didn't know if anybody else had had a chance to look at that email yet.
This is Ken. I did. I was hoping that was something we could amend our non-public conversation to a little bit further to go over that. I'm not sure a public forum is not, might not be the right way to discuss that.
I think it also just, just came in. I didn't even really get a chance to look at it. Like literally, I was setting up and I saw the email that you're talking about. I didn't really look at it, so I don't, I don't feel good about having, I haven't really looked at it.
The question was asked in the chat by Eric, just so I put this out to the Board. For those of the public that don't know, we have a recount scheduled this Friday morning at the Town Hall. And the question was the comfort level of using Zoom for the recount. I think that's a great potential. I could talk it over with Peter. And obviously, we could set the recount up like this. We would post an agenda tomorrow, which doesn't give a lot of notice. But if that's the means that the Board and Mr. Power would like to go, I can talk to Peter tonight.
So would there still be the people there actually doing the recounting and the public portion would be on Zoom? Is that the idea? Or I just don't really understand how that would work. I'm open to it, I just don't really understand it enough.
My understanding is that the Board is there when ballots come into question, meaning the School Board. Mr. Webb is providing the people who do the recount and those pieces. And I'm sure that if, again, we could most likely probably get it streamed through the Brookline cable as well. I just know that people are concerned about coming out. I know that this new law allows us to do things remotely. So if that was the case, we'd have to just set up the Zoom there. But I think Bob and I could, and Gina could make that happen.
I'm open to that.
Okay. Then what I would say to Eric's question, I will get an email out as soon as I can and see if we can make all of that happen. I'll get all the interested parties hopefully on my email and I'll start that conversation with Peter at the conclusion of this meeting. Okay? I will keep the Board updated. At this point, I'd like to turn it over to Gina so we can discuss. so we can discuss the, the Brookline District Calendar for 2021. You're muted, Gina. Bob, can you unmute Gina, please?
Sorry, I was trying to press it. It kept giving me an error message. It's a tough crowd here. All right. So if you take a look at our proposed calendar, which was approved in Hollis this morning, there are some awkward pieces to the 2021 school year. The first of which is that Labor Day is extraordinarily late, about as late as it could possibly be for us. But we are following our traditional calendar in that the teachers return the Monday prior to Labor Day. There would be professional days, that Monday, Tuesday and Wednesday, with school beginning on that Thursday, which happens to be September 3rd, which seems very late for our traditional calendar. School, the proposal includes school being in session for that Thursday and Friday. And then we have Labor Day weekend with a professional day on the Tuesday after Labor Day weekend. Because we have a significant election taking place at both the high school and CSDA. And then moving through, everything is pretty normal. We have another election taking place on November 3rd at CSDA and the high school. So that is another professional development day. Everything else is pretty typical. There is no proposed professional development day in February or March. The proposal includes just sort of swapping that extra PD day in September for what we would typically have in February or March. This includes the last day of school is June 23rd for students. That includes five snow days. And the last day for teachers in Brookline would be June 24th. So that gives us our typical 178 school days and our 185 working days for, for our teachers. Are there any questions? Bob, can you unmute some folks?
Yeah, what, yeah.
Why some people can't unmute themselves?
I don't know.
All right. Aaron, did you have a question too? Okay, so what is the election on, that you mentioned in September?
I believe it is the state election. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Corey.
I believe you're correct.
Okay. So, okay. Is it only in the high school where that's voting is taking place? I guess I'm.
No, at the high school and at CSDA.
Okay. Okay. But it's just, it seems like an odd start to the year with that day off.
I would agree. However, in trying to find the silver lining, the, the first day when teachers are back, we typically start at the high school. Everyone together. And Andy addresses everyone and we recognize folks for years of service and we kick off the school year. When we have 300 some odd teachers sitting there, they really are focused on getting their classrooms ready, laminating everything, getting name tags ready to go. They're really not, to be honest, paying attention to what it is that we have to say. Because they want to get ready for kids. And that's why we have them, because they're, they're focused on the kids. So this way would allow the, the teachers to have their three days of prepping their classrooms for the arrival of the students. And then that Tuesday after Labor Day, once the classroom's set, they've met their students, kind of figured out the first couple of days. And then all of that stress has been gone. And then they can focus on our district initiatives, our district goals. You know, all those messages that we want to, to share and appropriately timed professional development to really, you know, if we're starting something new, we have them in the professional development to start of the school year rather than in February. So I do see some functional advantages to it. It is just an awkward start of the school year.
Okay, yeah, that one, that one just felt clunky. I get what you're saying. I guess the one I was a little more concerned about in November, we have that, the 3rd off. And then we have the following week of Wednesday off, which is very random. Is there a way to avoid all that level of disruption in November? It's like we're, every week is almost essentially in, they're out of school and something's going on.
Right, and so you're relatively new to the school calendar, but it's called No School Ember. So, because there's so many disruptions. So we do have Thanksgiving, we do have Veterans Day. And then we always have a big election in November where, well, not always, but we often have a big election in November where we have that professional development day. If we don't have an election, we try to put it on a Friday or back to back with Veterans Day so that it's a little bit easier for families to accommodate. But, but really that is going to absolutely be a big election, I would imagine. And one that we would want our schools closed for.
Yeah, okay, I guess I get that. There's no real moving anything. Okay.
Um, I have a question if nobody else does at the moment. Am I a little better connected now? I switched.
Much better, thank you.
Um, so this is a really, really late calendar. Like I look at it, the 23rd is kind of killing me, I'm not going to lie. And a really late start as well. Have we ever considered, and I haven't been on the board, I don't think long enough to, to answer this question. Have we ever considered doing a slightly longer day and going for hours versus days? And what's the process of doing that?
So those are really good questions, but those are all tied directly to the collective bargaining agreement, which dictates number of days, et cetera. We do have a very long day and we do have far more hours than we need according to the minimum standards for the state. But, you know, looking at the start of the school year, that's also dictated by one of our district CBAs, collective bargaining agreements. So we've talked potentially about snow days. And now that we've gone remote learning, is there a potential to do some sort of remote learning in lieu of a snow day and making it up in June? We did, right now, we have quite a few students who have loaned Chromebooks from the district to support remote learning. So we'd have to figure out what it, would that look like in the middle of the school year on a snow day. But we certainly have a better sense of how we can manage that now that we're going through this remote learning process. But at the end of the day, Mr. Corey is the one that determines the very last day of school and how many snow days we need to make up.
The other thing, Allison, I would, now that we've done remote learning, because we have been talking about this concept for snow days. But I'd also like to look at this concept potentially on those election days. Because teachers are going to know kids are home. So if all of a sudden we picked up a day in November for an election and did away with snow days by going to remote learning, would probably be middle of June, which is a much more acceptable. And really, we've never looked at our calendar from just an hourly or a day perspective. We've looked at it from a curriculum perspective. And, you know, we feel that it's, it's appropriate for what we want to deliver as a curriculum. But again, if we were replacing time off with remote learning, I think I'd be very comfortable getting out in, in the middle of June. So that's definitely something that we as a, a school administrative unit could take a look at and come back to the board again in the future months. And I think the teachers will have a very good concept of what remote learning would look like.
I, I think that would be really interesting to take a look at. Now that we've kind of, we're getting our feet wet, whether we like it or not. And as far as like Chromebooks and stuff, I, I just get the sense that this community would be willing to come together to even privately, not through taxpayers, but through private donations, be able to accommodate students who are in need. But that's just, I can't speak for everyone clearly, but.
Allison, regarding elections, there's still uncertainty about what legislation going forward to do mail-in ballots. We don't really even know what the elections are going to look like.
Right, and I agree with you totally, Karen. So that's again, one of those things where it's a decision that can't be delayed. So I think we do delay until we have more data.
And speaking of data, I'd also like to look at, you know, based on the resources that the community has, what school day participation looks like with remote learning. Because if we hit a certain benchmark of participation on any given day, even based on the project, the community members that we know have access to resources, is that enough to be considered a school day for the district? And I don't know if, you know, I don't know what the, what's required, you know, in terms of participation remotely to be considered a school day. But, you know, this, this is the sort of data that I think would be really interesting for us to be able to look at at the conclusion of a chunk of time doing it.
I agree, and I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was just going to say, we are currently tracking participation for attendance purposes. And we have a really high percentage participating. Only a handful of students who are not, as, as Bob said earlier, we are reaching out to those families individually and, and working with them. What's difficult, while I would agree with you that the families that don't have access, we would still meet that threshold, that does not sit well to continue despite knowing that we have a, a group that absolutely cannot participate. But it's certainly something to continue to, to look through. And maybe we have a, a computer loan out process that's just in place, not just when, when we put it in place for, for this COVID-19 situation. But it's definitely, you know, additional things to consider.
Yeah, I guess going back to November, I, I, everything that everyone stated I agree with, I think would be really interesting now that we've done it to maybe consider for Election Day or something like that. I will say it's, it's tough as a parent working at home for this extended time, for one day when we're home and everything like that. It does, I mean, my kids are young, but they're learning. We never really did iPad, so they're learning that stuff. So it is stuff and experiences that are unique and different. And maybe for a day or two at a time, it might mix it up a little bit and it kind of makes it fun, which is great too. And it would just keep a little more consistency, maybe in November. Or whatever you just call it, No School November.
No, I agree with you, Ken. I think it would do a couple of things. One, it would give teachers a known date that we're preparing for. Because the election day is set in concrete. And then the other piece it would do is it would allow us, many times we have advanced notice of storms now. So if we knew that we had a major storm coming in on a Friday, we could plan ahead, we could get technology out to kids, get everything posted online. And I think again, because it wouldn't be this continuous online piece, it would work very well.
So do we need to move to approve this today?
That would be the goal, yes.
I move to approve the calendar as presented.
Do we have a second?
Go ahead, Aaron seconded it. But I guess my one question is, are we able to keep that, like, Election Day in November flexible right now? As a potential remote learning day? Or is that locked in stone then, that it will be a, a day off if we approve it today?
No, we could, that is, that still has our flexibility. I would need to get permission from the commissioner and the DOE. But I think we're going to be able to prove our success. And I think it would also allow us to continually practice this type of thing. So it's, if something ever should occur again, we'd be prepared.
Yeah, okay, very good.
Okay, so roll call vote, I'll just run through folks again. Allison?
Allison, aye.
Karen?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
Becky?
Aye.
Ken?
Aye.
So the calendar's approved 5-0. One thing that I'll work offline with the board chair, but I just wanted to mention to the board, is at the town meeting this year, it was agreed that the town and the school district would put together a study group to look at a formal budget committee. So the book, that group is going to be formed. And I got a notice from the, the select board asking us if we could name a school board representative. I don't think that has to occur tonight at this meeting. I can talk to Ken offline, he can check in and see how folks like to do it. Because typically what we would do for any type of appointments for committee is the chair would, you know, reach out to folks, see what they're interested in. And then he would come to our next meeting with a list of committee appointments. So I just want everybody to know that, that is out there. If you have interest, you might want to contact Ken. They would be starting meetings obviously once this is over and hope to have some sort of a proposal or input for the community in October. But there's no action tonight. If there are no other questions from the board, I think we can move into a roll call vote to enter into non-public. Again, for community members at home, the non-public session is to do teacher nominations. Every year at this time, the board and the administration get together to discuss teacher contracts, who will be issued contracts, things of that nature. And what we typically do is have our discussion and then the teacher nomination list. And everything becomes public when the non-public minutes are posted in the next couple of days. So could I get a motion from somebody to enter non-public?
I'm moved.
Do I have a second? Who is the second? Becky, thank you, Becky. So I have a motion, a second, roll call. Allison?
Aye.
Karen?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
Becky?
Aye.
Ken?
Aye.
So it was 5-0 to move into non-public. Each of the board members has a, the non-public access that was emailed to them. So we'll be leaving this meeting. I call the community members for their support. We will not be coming back to this public portion. And we'll see everybody in non-public shortly.
Thank you.
Thank you.